It's probably about six o'clock. Ms. Nyhagen and Ms. Selby are ill, not available. So without further ado, I'd like to call the College Place City Council Work Session to order to please stand so we can salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is he an engineer?
Hydraulics. So with that, we'll forego our moment of silence.
Reenactment of the mazula flag. I'm sorry.
Excuse me, I fill your purse. That's your purse.
I think I did.
Yeah.
That's not my first time.
Not your first rodeo?
Uh-uh.
I took a cup of coffee on the yesterday. I start up all day. Not such a bad one. Yeah, it was worse.
This is not acid.
True.
I may end up with a super villain.
So first thing on our agenda this evening is our update on the comprehensive plan. Mr. Ricard.
Yeah, so it's been a year, a little over a year, and we're at the final stages. I hope you all had time to read through the documents. We have Greg Dorn here tonight to give a brief presentation and then answering questions you may have. So without further ado, let's go ahead and turn it over to Greg.
Thank you very much.
Welcome back, Mr. Dorn.
Thank you very much. We are right near the end here. And really, this is your time tonight. So questions that you have, comments, I want to highlight a couple of things that you may have saw in the document, but by way of kind of reintroduction, this is an update of the city's comprehensive plan. It's something that's required by law, but even if it wasn't required, it's something that you would probably want to do, which is periodically check in and look and make sure that it still is consistent with your vision and is still consistent with your priorities and is still a statement of what it is you hope to accomplish. The document, which is pretty good size at this point, has a number of different parts to it. Perhaps the most important part is the vision statement and the goals and policies which have been updated. Things that have already been accomplished or no longer relevant have been removed and new items have been added. So you have updated goals and policies. This is a statement of what it is you hope to accomplish, how you hope to accomplish, and what are the things that distinguish College Place from other communities in the area. So that's what gets used the most, gets used by staff on a regular basis, and it's something that may be helpful to you as you make decisions over the course of the year and allocate resources, particularly when it comes to budget time. It should be a good resource and a guide. So updated goals and policies. There are a series of maps, some of which are here, and they have been updated. Probably the two most significant ones are the one that's labeled Future Land Use Map. This is a statement of how you would like to see land used in the future. This is what we are working toward and what we use any time there is a rezone request in the city. So the Future Land Use Map. And there are a number of changes to this map, and so we've numbered the changes. And so if you're one that really likes maps and really likes to look at the details, you can track and see specifically how things changed. The zoning map, which is used to guide development activities, and the standards in the zoning code are tied to the zoning map. Similarly, it's been updated, and there are a number of changes, and we've highlighted those, so you can specifically track and follow those as we go along. So Future Land Use Map, Zoning Map. So there are a number of other maps. There's transportation maps. There's maps that show vacant and underdeveloped land, which is kind of interesting because one of the things that you'll notice, with the exception of the property we refer to as the Christian property, which is recently annexed into the city. You look at those maps, you'll see that there's actually very little vacant or undeveloped or underdeveloped land in the city, which is going to have a bearing on some of the discussions in just a moment. Some of the significant changes in the document. The first and perhaps foremost is something we talked with you about a year ago, which is the reorientation of the city's urban growth area from the area around Martin Airfield to the southeast corner of the city along the State Route 125 corridor. This area around Martin Airfield, oh, thank you, around Martin Airfield had been targeted for industrial development, but there were a number of shortcomings with that site. There are the safety zones and the restrictions on use and height around the airport and the airfield immediately itself. There are some, there's a stream, there are some steep slopes, but, and you have limited access to get there. But perhaps the biggest one is, is that it would be very, very difficult, if not impossible, provide sewer service in this area. And as an urban growth area, the definition of an urban growth area is area where urban services exist or reasonably can be provided. And if we reasonably can't provide sewer to this area, it shouldn't be designated as an urban growth area. And in fact, encouraging development around the airfield would be contrary to one of the goals of the plan, which is to support the ongoing operations of the airfield. Because any time you have buildings and developments, you're going to have conflicts. So the most significant change is to redirect future growth, particularly commercial and industrial growth, to the southeast on the SR 125 corridor. This area is already in the city's water service area. A new well coming in this area. The transportation already exists. This area is suitable for development, so it's a reorientation of thinking. So that's a significant change. Another item, although it's not reflected on the map, but it's reflected in the plan, is even with this, there is, the city is still facing a challenge to go forward in the future. And the challenge is that although there is enough vacant land, particularly here, to support residential growth in the future and population growth, residential growth, population growth, without commercial and industrial development can't be sustained because it's a commercial industrial development that provides the services to this area, but more importantly, it provides the tax revenues necessary to be able to provide the city's services to support new residential development. So although there's enough land to meet the population need, there's not enough vacant land in the city to meet future needs for additional commercial and industrial development. And the challenge is, it's a shared challenge, because the county has responsibility to protect agricultural lands of long-term commercial significance. And now basically both the city of Wallowalla and College Place are surrounded by designated agricultural lands. So the county has responsibility to protect, the city has a responsibility to grow, and something is going to have to give. And in the short run, there's not going to be an easy solution to that. So instead of forcing the issue, what the comprehensive plan says is the city will continue to work with Wallowalla County to identify areas that are appropriate for future city growth with a particular emphasis on commercial and industrial development. It may very well be that it would be along the State Route 125 corridor, although there is a stream or a river down in this area and wetlands, which may limit the potential of that. But the point is to work with the county to find areas that are appropriate for future city growth when the time comes and areas where services exist or reasonably can be provided, as opposed to areas that look good on a map, but in reality can't be served. So that's the second item of significance in the plan. The third one is to recognize and establish a special zoning district for the Wallowalla University campus. Previously, the university properties and properties owned by the university were in a public use zone, and so they were subject to the same standards and regulations of City Hall, Lyons Park, and the Sewer Treatment Plant, none of which are what a university is. And so what we've now been able to establish is the framework for a zoning district specifically for the university campus, and that, I think, will meet the university's needs and the city's needs much more effectively in the future. Property owned by the university that is not on the campus, out around the town, would then be subject to the same zoning requirements and development standards as the neighboring properties. So if I lived over in this residential neighborhood and the university happened to own a piece of property next to me, we would both be subject to the same development standards in that scenario. But if it's property owned by the university, it's on the campus, then it would be the standards applicable to the campus. So that's a third change. A fourth change is a minor one, but it provides a foundation for some actions that will come in the next phase of this project. But previously, the city had two single-family residential zones, R-75 and R-60, and that was based on lot size, 7,500 versus 6,000 square feet. And those two zoning districts have now been consolidated into one zoning district. So the city has one single-family residential zoning district, which is the yellow on the map, the majority of the area. It has one multifamily residential zoning district, which is the area orange on the map, commercial, university campus, and blue is public, the public use. And as you'll notice, back to the previous point, you see very, very little gray on the map, and that's because there's very, very little land in the city that's owned for industrial use and development. And that's why that previous discussion of the future is so important, because one parcel or a handful of parcels zoned industrial is not an adequate economic base to sustain the city over time. The other item I wanted to draw to your attention has to do with the transportation policies. As a part of this process, the transportation policies were reviewed by the regional transportation organization and approved by them, so the city has met that requirement in addition to the road management requirements. There were a couple of policies that the planning commission focused on, and I wanted to bring those to your attention. One of them is a policy, I believe it's transportation policy number three, which says as new development occurs, we should try to diffuse and balance new development, the traffic impacts associated with it, particularly so we don't get concentrations of cars or trucks in existing neighborhoods. A second one is that as new development occurs, particularly new uses to create a lot of trips, that those uses should be located in areas where the roads have adequate capacity to serve them, so we're not creating needs to build new roads. And one, I understand that you've talked about in the past, is there is a policy in the plan, and the planning commission discusses quite a bit, that says two things. It says, number one, if there are private streets, they have to be built to city standards, because sometimes there's a tendency to think, well, if I'm going to build a street and have it privately owned, I can build to any standard I want. And the plan says, no, private streets have to be built to the same standard as public streets, so that we have adequate streets. But the corresponding policy says private streets are discouraged. Now, the debate was on the word discouraged, and alternative words were things like prohibited, because from a practical standpoint, from the staff standpoint, private streets present a number of problems, although perhaps good in theory. If somebody builds a street at private expense and owns it at private expense, the question is, do they maintain it at private expense, and do they adequately maintain it? That's one big issue. And another issue is frequently utilities go in under the street or in the road right away, and if that's private, then where do you put the utilities? So it presents another set of problems, and there have been concerns and issues with streets being built privately, not maintained, and then they become a problem, and at some point they come back to the city's doorstep, and it's, this street hasn't been maintained, it's a problem, we want you to take care of it now. And so the language, whether it's discouraged or prohibited, is directed at getting streets built to standard, maintained, and recognizing that although it would be nice if streets were maintained by everybody adequately, that doesn't happen, and it's better for the city to do it upfront than to come in after the fact, after the damage has been done. But I know you've been discussing that in the past, and so we wanted to highlight that for you. There's also language in there that was discussed regarding cul-de-sacs. It has similar language. Cul-de-sacs are discouraged. There may be an instance where a cul-de-sac is appropriate, and it says if there is, there needs to be a connection so that pedestrians and bicyclists have a way of getting through, as opposed to having to move out to main streets and around. So there is a provision for that, but generally speaking, cul-de-sacs also present a number of problems. Similarly, the language says discouraged, it stops short of saying prohibitive. So there are a number of other changes that you may have noticed, but in the interest of time, I'm going to stop right there and see if you have any questions or things you'd like to talk more about.
When I looked at the transportation appendix, and one of the questions that came up was it classified 12th Avenue as a minor, from Myron Road to College Avenue is a urban minor arterial, whereas Fourth, from Larch to Davis, is a major arterial. What's the difference?
Those are federally classified roads, I think is what you're referring to.
Yeah, Fourth is a collector, major collector.
Fourth is major collector.
Right.
And then the mayor's asking about 12th, which is listed.
As a.
Is a minor.
Arterial.
Minor arterial.
Yeah, those are classifications that have been on the books for years, and we didn't change them.
I guess the difference would be the amount of access you allow to an arterial versus a collector. So collectors generally have driveways coming on to them, whereas arterials, although 12th Street does have a lot of access points to it, most of the north side from Larch all the way to Myron has very limited access, other than roads coming into it. The south side does have driveways, existing conditions.
And it's the volume of traffic and the connectivity too.
Well, I'm just, you know, it seems to me 12th is a lot, lot busier than Fourth, and once, 12th is listed as minor and Fourth is major, 12th is.
I think Fourth is a major collector.
It's a major collector.
As opposed to a minor arterial. So it's actually classified as smaller, as actually smaller volume, really?
Well, it lists, it lists here, and Fourth Street from Davis to Academy is a major urban collector.
Right.
Myron is a minor arterial, and I'm trying to figure out what differentiates major and minor.
So arterial.
But, well, there's, go ahead, Robert, you're right. There's arterials and collectors are the difference between the two.
So if you're going to go from large size down, a major arterial is your largest street, those are huge, 12,000 or more a day supposedly, and then you have a minor arterial, and then you have a major collector, and you have a minor collector, and then you have local streets. So the minor collector sits right underneath, the major collector sits right underneath the size of a minor arterial, which is a little bit larger.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so it's a little confusing, but the feds came up to it, so.
So that might be why.
Other questions or things you'd like to talk about?
You know, we discussed it at some point here, but the whole idea of shifting the, from the airport over. It seems like, as far as the comprehensive plan, what are the discussions with the county as far as, how do I say, acquiring more land? What is the process going forward? I understand the whole, I don't know if it's changed, but the whole 100-acre foreign land parcels that can be broken up and so on, and in many ways, Wallowalla is blocked, and the whole region is somewhat blocked, and they can't, they can't sell it, they can't move it, and, yeah, I know some of that, some of those details. But what are your thoughts, what are your plans on moving south there exactly? I've always thought that is residential to some point. There's wineries in the way now that are being developed and whatnot. What kind of industrial or commercial type businesses are we looking for down in that area? Just, and not specific, but just what are your thoughts about? I understand completely the fact that our own highways heading for the airport, there's some issues there. We don't, you know, it's a small airport. I've always thought that that, heading west, was an area that College Place could look at, appeared a last chance road, but it seems like we're now thinking that's not an option for residential or for industrial. So anyway, I'm kind of a shotgun statement there, but just the whole movement and what are the thoughts about where that one could be available?
Sure. And there's a couple of different aspects, they're very good questions. First of all, with respect to this, the city proposes, but only the county can approve urban growth area boundaries. So this is under review by the county right now. In our conversations with the county, they haven't raised any concerns or objections to this. The county is just behind the city in the process. So at some point, they'll catch up, and this will be reflected on the county map as well as the city map. So that's kind of one step. The next step, which is, where do we go beyond that, is there's, we've talked about three lines of thinking. One is talking with the port businesses, the economic development community, and Mike's been very active in this. What are the needs in the marketplace? What types of businesses are looking to invest and have a presence here in Wallowalla? So part of it is, what does the market say? Another part of that is then what are the areas that lend itself or would be suitable for economic or industrial or business development now or in the future, and what would it take? And so those are things like, you know, where are the roads, where's the rail, where's the water, where's the sewer? So you've got the market, and you've got the infrastructure development attributes, and then the third thing you've got is where is the farmland? Now, the law says preserve agricultural land of long-term commercial significance. And so the question is, what's commercially significant? There's a lot of farmland in the county, and part of the question is, is all the farmland the same or equal? And it may not be. So part of it will be looking at it from the standpoint of soil types and yields and things like that, and kind of taking those three circles and bringing them together, and what does that tell us? It would not be, I mean, from a, from a, from a business standpoint and from an infrastructure standpoint, the SR 125 corridor would be the logical area, and it's consistent with what's going on the other side of the border, as Oregon was coming up.
Let me clarify what my thought, yes, the more you talk, more of my thoughts are being clarified. Whenever I've heard that we lack an industrial, I kind of go, you know, that's a bad thing, you know? Oh my. And then I think about extracting plutonium and, you know, and making steelworks and things like that, you know? But, but it's really not that anymore. Our, and it's not just our area, it's the entire nation, it's moving away from that. So instead of the gray areas, looking at that in some sort of a gasp, oh my goodness, it's really, to your point, it's business.
It's business.
It's not, it's not making things as much as it is what you just.
Shipping, distribution.
Retail.
Service, retail is, and the character of retail is changing now too, with so much online activity and the like, shipping and distribution and things like that, you know, become very, very important. Oh, you know, going back to the notion, we say industry, we think smokestacks. If you've driven from Seattle to Tacoma recently in the Kent and Auburn Valley, that's all industrialized, but you don't see a single smokestack. It's all warehouses and flexible space that businesses could grow in and then move out of and things of that nature. So it's a, the nature of the development last night is very, very different in character, and so things like having access, visibility, those become a lot higher, as well as, you know, desirable places to work and for employees and to be able, you know, to take a break and things of that nature. So it wouldn't surprise me that this is the case, and that could even mean that there's some, you know, wineries or things that might be, as they're thinking in the future, might be, you know, a topic of conversions and things. But what the state has said is, when you get in this situation, what we're asking you to do is take a comprehensive view and not do it incrementally, and, you know, come to us with, you know, this farm this year and this farm next year and kind of chip away at things. We really want you to think it through, come up with a plan, and then follow the plan. So that's what we went to the county and said. Instead of trying to force something now, like coming in with a proposal to convert agricultural lands, we'll take a step back, provided that you make a commitment to work with us, and let's find a solution that'll work, you know, together. The county benefits when there's industrial or business development in College Place. It's not an either-or, everybody benefits when development occurs if it's in the right place.
I would make a comment, there's already along the 125 corridor, although not accessing 125, wineries and prime agricultural land, and several more opening there off of Pepper's Bridge. That eventually, that restricted agricultural area there along 125 will, in the future, I think, become more developable as.
Now, the other part of it is, is also not, and the planning commission recognized this, was don't put all the eggs in one basket. And it may be, if we're looking out 20 years or more, maybe some of these areas in the long run are suitable. There's not that far to the highway, so there may be some benefit to going out there. But the point is, let's take a thoughtful and comprehensive approach, and let's figure out a solution that something can be implemented over time that works for the city, works for the county, works for the state, and it's based on a kind of realistic assessment of where the business community is these days.
How's the working relationship between the three parties, let's say Wallowalla County and College Place? I think, you know, without any basis at all, there's a thought that certain entities are being hedged in, opportunities are being removed from, you know, Wallowalla, College Place, Wallowalla County. What is the temperature of that water right now? Is it?
I'll give you the naive answer and others, because I'm the outsider. I mean, the county's very, very open and supportive. We've always been able to sit down with Tom and his staff and outline concerns, share issues, be very candid back and forth. Also have the same kind of relationship with the city of Wallowalla at the staff level. So, you know, all three of us are going through the process. So, you know, all three of us are going through the process at the same time, and the working level, the staff level has been very, very positive.
Yeah, you know, Elizabeth Chamberlain is the director over at Walla Walla, and Tom Glover is the county director, and I've got a great working relationship with them. We're actively speaking about participating on a regional study of those prime agricultural lands. I know that Tom's budgeting some money for that next year. I'm not sure what Elizabeth is doing, but I have a proposal for some funds in my budget for that as well, and it's, it's something that, it's good that we're talking together. But more importantly, all parties recognize that this is something that we need to do today, you know, next year. We can't wait until the next update cycle because it's, it's too late. This plan has to be really done far ahead of the next cycle, so. But no, the, the relationship is good at the staffing level, and I think, I think across the board, in all departments, we probably all agree that the relationships are good there.
The mayor's been very, very helpful as well. There's just times when having the, the mayor there, just when he's there, it just says, this is important enough to the city, and, and that sent a message too, and I think the county's responded to that, recognized that.
Politically, I think, I think things are, are much different than they were 10 years ago. And, and I don't think, I don't see that deteriorating. You know, there's, there's, there's always, there's always kind of memories of the past on certain things, but I think over time that's improved fairly significantly. I don't see any real, in, in real attempt by any one of the political entities to freeze the other out.
Water rights, what, how did this address? I haven't read through all the documents, but we've, we've had a lot of discussion in the last, water rights is probably the wrong use of the term, but we've, we've spoke in the past about our ability to supply water to the city. How does this plan address that, or does it?
Well, the expansion directly ties into the resources that we're putting down into that area directly. It is in our water service area, so under, prior to even calculating in water rights that we're acquiring, on paper, we have sufficient rights to move into that area. Beyond that, I, I would have to turn it over to Robert to talk about, you know, you know, expansion beyond of those areas.
Land doesn't need to be attached to the city limits, does it? It can be, can it be, you can, you mean as far as water service area? Yes.
Typically, it's concurrent and, or abutting, and generally you don't have islands. When we do a water system plan, Paul, feel free to speak up as well, but typically, it's kind of a dance between concurrency under the Growth Management Act and also water system planning. So what you're doing is you're going out and you're, you're figuring out how much water you can serve, how many acres, depending on the use, you can actually supply water to, and that informs your growth process. So when we go to, every six years, we'll do an update, and we'll try and expand that area further, that our service area, and it typically is in our city limits, and we'll expand that a little bit further, right? Then they'll look at that under the Growth Management Act, and as they try and expand that UGA, that'll incrementally increase. But at some point, if you run out of water, that starts to pull back in.
Yeah.
So right now, I think we're okay as far as paper rights, but there's obviously an ongoing concern about, you know, how long can you sustain increased growth per time? So we're watching it, and something we'll do through the water system planning process.
The thing my question is, we're looking at acquiring some of these areas for the reasons we just discussed as far as commercial business. Is there thoughts about, you're not necessarily moving into areas where you can gain water rights, that's kind of, you're, you're looking at what you can, what you have right now that will support the growth?
Well, we're actually looking at what the opportunity is applied, because that's really the bigger question, because wherever you put your wells, obviously, you're gonna, the, the salt's pretty coarse, and so it's not so much, it's not so much a question of where you're putting your wells, it's just a matter of what's down there and who's pouring how much out, and how much are being replenished over time. So in terms of water rights, City of Walla Walla, and I don't know if they still have this policy in place, but every time somebody came into the city, they had to give up their water rights. That was a part of it. And so there are water rights out there that we could be looking at if we wanted to go that route. But again, the bigger question for us ultimately is how much water is actually out there today?
Yeah, yeah.
So Robert, you can deal with the water rights, and I think the water rights that we're acquiring will serve beyond the exist, the proposed boundary. So, so we can grow, and right now, we just limit our water right boundary to the growth area. With, back in the early eighties, when we first formed this, we, we applied water service area boundaries to areas outside of our growth area. So we still got a water right service area up north, adjacent to Sunset Villa all the way to Ghost Row. It's not in our service area, but, not in our UGA, but it is in our water service area just because at that point, they wanted to fill gaps, and that's how that came about.
Okay.
Normally, we stay within the boundary of the urban growth area, although we have more than we can go to.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions? So Mayor, what will happen is there will be, draft ordinance has been prepared, it'll be on your agenda next week, and, and that would be for, for adoption. When that occurs, the city will have satisfied the requirements under the Growth Management Act to complete the periodic review and update. Within the plan, there are a number of action items that are called for, and we've already started to work with the planning commission on updating the regulations so that they are consistent with the comprehensive plan. And so, over the course of the year, we'll be coming back with revisions to the different code provisions, and one of the significant things we're doing there is taking the regulations, which are now spread over five different chapters, and so you have to think, now where is it, is it in this chapter, is it in this chapter? We're gonna bring it all together into one chapter, so there'll be one table of contents, one set of definitions. If you're looking for something, you can do one word search, not five, and so, and then we'll be able to streamline things, so it'll be a much more user-friendly document for property owners, builders, developers, staffs, and then along the way, we'll be addressing a number of the policy issues that raise the comprehensive plan. So that's the, that's the next step, but we'll be back next Tuesday then, and for final action.
Question, assuming, will we have to do anything once the, once the county makes their, does their decisions on our urban growth area? Will we have to amend the comprehensive plan anyway?
No, because we've, we've made those applications, council approved those applications, and we've contemplated all that in our comprehensive plan, so, no.
Okay. If they don't, for whatever strange reason, will we have to change things then?
That's the question.
Well, no, because.
They still have the same policy. The county's plan will say, you know, this, the city will say this is our desired urban growth area, but it's the county map that says officially what it is.
Okay.
So hopefully, it'll be in alignment. If for some reason the county says, no, it's gonna be less than that, the city still has a statement of policy, which is, we think this would be our urban growth area, so it's still there.
I would clarify that with, if they don't approve this, then I would think that we would be coming to council to authorize an appeal to the Growth Management Hearing Board, because we have sound justification to do so.
We would do that. Thanks, that's it. Great clarification.
Well, I know you have a number of things on your agenda, so we'll see you next week.
Have fun. Thank you so very much for coming.
You bet.
Where is that young man?
Well, that young man is, Mr. Rizzatello is off at a community council meeting that's getting over as we speak, so. The budget requests are here. Ms. Kilgore, would you like to go over the property taxes, the taxes in the? Pardon? Troy can sit wherever he wants.
Well, everybody else is at the table. I wanted to invite you to the table.
Maybe he doesn't want to.
He wants to.
I did shower this morning.
Well, I didn't know if you were waiting for other people, so.
Nope, just you.
See Reece, his recon.
There's a. Larry, Larry maybe showed up any minute.
It's okay.
Reece not coming.
There you go.
Mike can sit there. You're such a troublemaker.
I'm sorry.
No, you're not.
Thought maybe he wanted to be part of the team.
Anyway, going back, Ms. Kilgore, would, would you please go over the, the tax situation, and I think, the five-year budget request comparison?
Sure. Mike had prepared a PowerPoint to go through the budget, kind of to lead us through, so I'm not sure if maybe I should use his outline or get started that way?
Just jump right in with this, when he gets here, we'll figure out where we are.
Okay. Well, you see in front of you up on the screen, my prediction of property tax collections for 2018 for the total for the year, and then also for 2019. We had quite a large number in our new construction for the 2019 tax rule. I think it was around fifteen million. Don't quote me on that, but it was a sizable amount, so we actually broadened our tax base and even with the increase from a million eight eighty-five this year to a million nine thirty-two prediction next year, we still, we actually have a decrease in the tax rate per thousand. So that's kind of nice, in both the debt service and the general collection, so.
So that's, so there's two things going on. I always ask this question every year, but here we go. So there's two things going on. One is that there's additional new construction, fifteen million. What was the big piece that, is that, just everything?
I'm not sure.
Okay. Comprehensive, is that, is that appropriate?
I'm sorry, what was?
Comprehensive, is that on the highway, hell, is that commercial drive?
I don't think that is, that wasn't complete.
It wasn't. It just got completed this spring, so probably not.
For, okay, eighteen, okay, that's all right.
Yeah.
And then the other thing, as appraisals go up, that's, that's to your point, in that as all, everything gets worth more, it's diluting now the, the rate per thousand and.
The broader our tax base gets, and then the more diluted the rate becomes.
Okay, yeah.
And that happened last year? Yeah, the year? Or maybe it was just last year?
I think it happened.
Yeah.
I feel like it was a couple of times.
Two years, yeah.
That's good.
Yeah. So, that is in a nutshell, property taxes. Do we have the retail sales tax? We can talk about that one too. Okay, so this is what I foresee happening with the retail sales tax. We had, we had actually quite an increase this year, it was about eleven percent over last year. Yeah, it was, it's pretty impressive actually. And then I have an increase from 2018 to 2019 primarily because we have about a hundred and thirty-five thousand added into that 2019 number that has to do with the Marketplace Fairness Act and the collection of sales tax from sellers in other states that are selling to Washington residents. So that kicks in actually, was it today?
Yesterday.
Yeah, for yesterday. So we'll kind of see in fourth quarter what that does, but Mike and I were talking about it and decided that ten percent, ten percent of this year's sales tax was probably a reasonable amount to predict, so that's why the increase, why the line goes up as deeply as it does there.
So you're saying, I'm sorry, so the people shipping things out of state, that's what you're talking about, we're gonna be receiving that sales tax?
It's, when somebody buys something from out of state.
Yeah.
The out of state sellers now have to pay the state of Washington sales tax.
Yeah. That's for people buying here in person, but that's also affects?
No, mail order.
Mail order only.
Ordering on Amazon. For a place without a brick and mortar in Washington D.C.
Right, right. And College Place has some of that?
Yeah, Marketplace Fairness Act, and then the federal one.
And you were saying that's about ten percent of the total?
Well, in looking at what other cities our size are projecting nearby, I felt that it was a safe bet, because Prosser, they released their figures and they were very similar, and they don't have a Walmart than we do, so I felt we were safe.
No, okay, thanks.
I have a question. Well, what are, eleven percent over last year, what do we, what's that from?
I think just the economy.
Yeah, we have, we have a very good resilient economy here.
Yeah, so sales tax is looking encouraging for next year, so if our two years cross. But I, I think it's fairly, fairly the same prediction. So I talked about property tax, and then just talked about sales tax, so I'll let you start your presentation.
So I made a PowerPoint this go around just to tie everything to strategic plan, and then things that basically are going on. So the agenda for tonight pertaining to budget, a little brief comment about mission, strategic plan goals, summarize some accomplishments, go over some current economics for the area and the state, and then some initial results for a survey. We conducted a survey through Survey Monkey about city services and services that citizens deem as important. Proposed staffing changes, sounds like we'll over your property and sales tax projection, and then we'll get into the department head proposals, and capital facility equipment replacement IT plans that tie all those proposals together. And then budget calendar going forward, which was included in the council packet at the last meeting. So mission, village, mission, strategic plan goals. So this is just telling what we view the vision for the next ten years, where ultimately in 2027, we'll have a mix of small businesses and housing interfaces with the university, and we have tourist trade and a feeling of a small town, and everyone is working together to fulfill the vision. Mission statement is to provide leadership and effective, physically responsible services to achieve our community's vision. The values which were established in the strategic plan is open and honest cooperation, respect, service, and diversity. So the strategic plan goals and what we're doing all ties into these key five areas is resource development, cooperation, connection, meaning partnerships, infrastructure investment, which means keeping up on our water, wastewater, street, stormwater, planning for prosperity, that ties in the economic development, and then optimal operations. So we're fulfilling the desires of residents within the revenues that we have. So as far as accomplishments go, just provide a summary for the main departments here, so administration, and that compiles myself, finance, city core, and human resources. The pilot youth recreation program was very successful. We got a grant for the movies at the park, financial policies, legislative appropriations for well number one and two, and many grants that tie into all of the. and many grants that tie into all of those. For community development, development continues to grow, which is good. So Homestead, they're finishing stuff up on the bluff, Stepper Edition off C Street. Villages at Fort Wall Walla, which is behind Home Depot, and then Comprehensive Health. We have front office staff now for community development. We obtained the historic preservation grant, the comp plan, street vacations around the university. And there is a lot of business activity now and going into next year, which is great. Fire, we replaced the wildland engine, brought back the fire training officer position, kitchen remodel. And then the last meeting, establish ambulance service locally here. And then police, the two officer hires, the take-home vehicles, security camera over Kowanis Park, and then really stepping up with code enforcement. So a lot of good things. And then with public works, growing GIS, fourth and KI Meatway, and then our drinking water wells and Relight Washington.
Mr. Rosatella?
Yeah.
Can I go back a few pages and ask a couple of questions?
Yeah.
The villages at Fort Walla Walla, someone asked if that was being renamed. I know that that was kind of a thing. Is that, do you have a new name?
No, it is not. The hearing, there was a comment at the hearing and the hearing examiner considered whether or not he had the ability to require retraining there. And we don't.
Okay.
And it's not a copyright.
So, and then, did we get all of the police cars already?
No.
But we're.
But I saw that on your section to talk more about that.
Yeah.
How many more do we?
Well, we're still waiting for three that have been funded.
Okay.
So we're waiting from the state for those.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
That's all.
Okay. For current economics, and this is just providing an overview. The business activity is growing, retail sales are strong. The significant development opportunities exist in College Place. And we're starting to gain developer and retail interests because we're starting getting for ourselves when we go out ICSC. So people are actually looking in the International Council of Shopping Centers conference. So we have a very resilient economic base, which is good. The state revenues are strong. However, there is some headwinds. So mortgage rates are approaching five percent, inflation rates just shy of three percent, two point seven. Our unemployment's at four point two percent. The dark side of that is that there's higher construction costs because the contractors aren't hungry for work. The parking lot's a prime example of that. We were going to try to deal with that this year. However, the estimates came back at double to triple what we were looking at, so.
What was that?
The parking lot.
Oh.
Yeah.
A rubble field that we parked.
Okay.
Yeah. Housing prices, they continue to climb though in the area. So second quarter 2013, it was just north of a hundred and seventy-four thousand. Second quarter 2018, it's now north of two hundred and fifteen thousand. That's the median price. And then the issues we're dealing with is aging infrastructure. So the two-hundred-year replacement schedule for our local streets and then trying to deal with the collection system for water and wastewater. So consumer sentiment, and I believe this is what's leading to the growth in the retail sales tax. It continues to grow. This is from University of Michigan. And they have a projection going into future years. There's a slight dip. But we have enough businesses that are in process where I feel that it mitigates that. The expected change in prices, this is also from the University of Michigan. Basically around that two point seven to three percent. It's been holding steady for some time. And they projected will continue to do that. Retail sales, this is what the port puts out at the county level. As you can see at both these charts, it continues to grow, both general merchandise and eating and drinking places. And it's attributable to universities, our tourism base, and there's people moving here, so. Housing in Walla Walla, as I said, continues to climb in the price and that's leading to some challenges. The housing affordability index over the last five years, that's also gone between around like one ninety to one forty-five and a spike just shy of two hundred and eighty, which means it is not really affordable around here. And that is an issue going forward. Okay, the next part's the city services survey. If you go into board docs, there's a hyperlink, so you can actually look at interactively all the responses to the questions. I'll just provide some salient points from the said survey. So the survey, so far we received a hundred and one responses. That's a little over a one percent response rate. Advertised to key businesses in town through social media, the website. Largest age group was between thirty-five and forty-four. The key amount of folks that filled out the survey, seventy-four percent owned their house. Highest response areas was the older section of College Place between Fourth and Twelfth and Large and College at eleven point six nine percent, followed by Garrison Creek Heights and then the ten point three nine percent and the northern section of College Place, north of Whitney East of College Avenue. Net promoter score, this is just tying in all the questions from last year and this year. So folks could choose anywhere from zero to ten for rating of the services. And the top ones was fire department at eight point five nine, followed by community events at eight point four eight, police at eight point four one, administration at seven point eight one, and it goes on from there. They're all really good scores. The lowest one was economic development, which means we just need to be grown the amount of businesses in the city, which we're trying to do. City services, the survey results, fire department, community events, and police, they all scored high. For top budget priorities, this is where folks could choose essentially the top five that they would really want us to be looking at. It's police and crime prevention at fifty-eight point nine seven percent, followed by economic development. It's just north of thirty-four percent, parks at thirty-three percent, utility infrastructure at thirty-two, and then ambulance at thirty point seven seven, and then it goes on from there. Any questions as I breeze through all of this?
Let's talk about, did you breathe?
Yeah.
Talk about retail.
Yeah.
You know, we saw the numbers are up and we're, we got three buckets here, car dealership, Walmart.
Yeah.
Home Depot. Am I missing?
There is other stuff that's on the horizon.
And that's my question. There's that, and I know you can't share perhaps. You're optimistic. I know we've been, we've talked about this now for a while. What are your thoughts as far as expansion of the retail base?
Well, if you look at the economics of the area, and I've run the reports through as re-business analyst, I really believe that the valley is only going to be able to support one more, like, big retail development, retail area. And honestly, what it boils down to is who gets there first. Now, the area that we have is right off College Avenue, across the street from the high school. And if you look in the capital facility plan, there's a big cost under wastewater for a trunk line because we need a sanitary sewer line to make all of that developable. Meanwhile, Walla Walla at the end of Myra Road, that land where it deadens at State Route one twenty-five, that's an area that they're looking to punch through Myra. There's a lot more cost associated with that because it has to do with a road, two roundabouts, a traffic light, and all the infrastructure. With us, it's just a trunk line. So we really need to essentially build the trunk line. And I believe we will be good because I've talked to folks who want to develop in that front part.
So Mike, you think there's one more? You know, I thought there wasn't even that room. And then, of course, what's happened at the old Blue Mountain Mall area has been quite striking and amazing. You wonder, what is the upper limits here? Is there room, okay, to your point, there isn't room for both to develop or we don't know?
I mean, it's really up to the investors. But just looking at the leakage and surplus within retail expenditures in the valley, based on my previous experience, I feel safe to say that there's only room left for one more good-sized retail development area. So it's advantageous for us to jump on that and put the trunk line in. And we're putting in grants for that, but I will be very forthcoming about that. There is going to be a gap where we're going to have to do a bond of some sort if we do that. But we can recoup that on all the connection fees.
When will that be, next year?
That would be next year. We're out trying to get grants right now to lessen the gap. Okay?
So the three, you know, the three activities are sales tax, there's going to be, there's obviously property tax on retail businesses. And then there's the residential taxes that we all pay. And I don't, I think I've looked at it. So the expansion of houses, residential areas, equally as important as retail? Not, not a?
I put it this way, depends what state you're in. As far as the state of Washington, my answer would be no. And here's why. Because with your property tax, the highest rate you can increase is at one percent. Your average cost of services per year, as you saw in that graph I just showed, was around two point nine seven. So for every house you add, it actually makes it more and more difficult to keep growing, to keep up with that. With commercial and industrial, it's actually the opposite where they pay quite a bit more than they consume in services. So it ends up essentially bolstering the residential activity.
I think the key there, the key to focus on is that residential actually costs us because we have to add services to keep up with the residential. So as, as we build more residential, there's more requirements for public service, for fire, police, for utilities. That all adds in and it simply doesn't pay for itself.
Yep.
Without having the accompanying commercial growth.
Exactly.
Thanks, Mike.
Yep. Any further questions that I breezed through? Okay, proposed staffing changes, I just thought I would call out certain things that are on the horizon. And then Sarah and Lisa and Sean can add to the importance of one of the positions. So stormwater utility, which passes council last meeting, there's two positions associated with that. So a utility worker, which is a person cleaning the storm sewer system and doing street sweeping and so forth. And then stormwater engineering technician, which is a person inspecting the construction runoff, GIS, things like that. Police department, there's retirements ahead here, the detective and police records clerk. What we're looking at is basically adding code enforcement, ammo control, evidence officer. And that way Roger can show them the ropes on the evidence side of things before he retires.
Is that in motion right now?
Yeah.
Because he's retiring next year.
Yeah. And then the police records clerk, we've been recruiting for that. The idea for next year is one additional police officer. And then once they're in flocks, of all the folks in our patrol, ultimately we have one of them become a detective.
We have an additional police officer or replace driver?
Well, with the, with.
The code enforcement.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So that is the idea there. So one of the folks who is in our patrol, they, that they would become detective just because in past experience, it's really hard, given the level that we pay to be recruited out of the gate for a detective. Try down call facts and just to be realistic, I don't really believe that would happen. The finance and court department areas, there is a proposal for a deputy finance director court position because the workload has dramatically increased with the additional services, grants, community events, and we basically need help. So they will get into depth with that at their proposals. Property and sales tax, I won't go over it because you all went over that prior to me getting here. And sorry for that, but I was at community council meeting, so I'm all over placed today. With that, now we are at the department head budget proposals. So with the department head budget proposals, there is a document within board docs and there's bookmarks within it. So you can choose essentially what department I'll look at. It'll make it easier to go through. And it's in alphabetical order, the bookmarks. So I will go through my, my brief section as soon as it downloads here. And then after myself, I'll go to the city corp narrative. For the administration narrative, it pretty much is consistent with the previous year. So the trainings, it's, so I can go to the state and Pacific Northwest City Managers Conference. As far as the. It is, as far as the legislative proposal, it's very staffs quo. Our new lobbyist, Brian Enzlo, has done a great job. And it actually came in below what we put in the budget for last year. So it costs exactly the same as the prior lobbyist. So there is a savings of five thousand. We did not lessen that amount though, because half of College Place is actually in that Mill Creek Flood Control District. And the city of Walla Walla, the county and others, they received the grant from Army Corps of Engineers to essentially study Mill Creek. There is some lobbying activity afoot for construction dollars. So we thought that would be good as a placeholder, depending on how that goes along. Just for your knowledge, the Mill Creek Flood Control District actually comprises the part of the College Place to the east of Large. So everything east of Large is actually in that flood control district. The only other wildcard within the administration narrative is the whole library services question. We'll delve into that in another meeting, but it's just putting stuff on the ballot across monkey. And if we decide to do that next year, we'll have a budget for it, and that's the wildcard in essence. So that was the narrative that I put together for those respective elements.
Where are we at right now in the budget process? It's at the.
We are behind where we should be.
No, don't worry, no. Yeah, I know that, I know that, that level of feeling is a good feeling.
We have consolidated all of the department requests into one document now for as far as operating expenses go. I've been working on the payroll budget. Mike's been working on the capital side of things. And those two are about ready to put into the document as well. But I'm just trying to piece things together at this point.
Understood.
Yeah, it's just not as much happened while I was gone that I had hoped would happen, so. I'm catching up.
Is it possible towards the, so it needs to be done by approximately?
December thirty-first.
That's the, okay, that's a, that's a, that's a good date. Is there any way to get to, as I may have asked this before, summary by department with the variance? I saw there's a five-year. I need to look at that.
Yeah, I actually had a note to do that this year from our meeting last year.
Yeah, we have time. No, I just, it'd just be interesting to see, I don't know, what do you think? A five-year or just over last year as far as percentage increase by department to see? Not so much the dollar amounts, but well, the dollar amount in that column for a percentage increase in a very summary level. So that the council members could just look at it and ask one or two questions about why, what?
Without seeing all the line items?
Yeah. Is that possible? I don't know. Is that pretty easy or? It's always easy. Not now, but you know what I'm saying, when you're down towards the end and you're ready. That'd be, yeah, just to give an overall, so if no. That'd be, yeah, just to give an overall, so if no one's going to do a deep dive, or if they, if not everyone does, at least look at a one-page summary, or two-page summary, or something, just a... Thank you.
That'd be cool.
It's a lot of hard work. It really is.
Yep. Okay, if anyone does have any questions for me in next narrative, going in alphabetical order, it would be Lisa, city clerk.
Hi. So I'm really going to just kind of go over the things that would be budget impact-wise for my budget. Slideshow's not going to work, okay. Oh, it's...
It's working up on the screen.
It's working up on the screen, I'm sorry. I guess that's all that matters.
You want to click it, maybe that's...
So...
Wow, it's a clicker.
Okay. So anyway, this, these are the areas, just an overview of what I'm responsible for. You guys know a lot of it, and then also public records, records requests, and all of the events that have double, tripled.
Play Mike.
Hundred percent increase, because we start from zero.
Now it's working here and not up there. Why?
Maybe close out of it.
Why don't you just try this?
I wonder if it's because I still have mics up. Let me... I'm just saying, I noticed. Let me think about it.
Oh, there was slideshow, you were on the wrong screen.
I was on the wrong screen. Sorry for the technical difficulties. Let's see, I need IT help?
Yeah.
So, board docs, this last year, we implemented that for all of the boards and commissions, and I beg of you not to take this away from me. If you do, the staff request increases by two.
Yeah.
Because these council packets are easily six, 700 pages apiece. There's just no feasible way to do them any other way than electronically. One of the things that I'm looking at potentially coming that could be a liability to the city is the public records laws that were passed last year. They have a reporting requirement that is new and very complex, that the joint legislative audit and review committee requires. The first reporting requirement was due by July 1st of this year, and the timeframe was July 23rd of 2017 through December 31st of 2017, at which time they didn't even have the guidance set up for the cities and what they needed to be collecting to report. They came out with that, the first little bit of it in November of 2017, but the most current one was produced in the end of May of this year. So the cities that had to report on this, it's anybody that is over $100,000 in expenditures to respond to public records requests. That includes your staff time, your legal costs, that sort of thing. As I'm going through these, you can see there's, they have 18 different metrics that they're requiring you to track, and of those metrics, there's like three to five or more points in each one, because like, this right here is one metric, but all of these are the data points that are included in this one metric. So they say 18, but there's way more than that, that you have to track and collect on every single public records request that comes in. And so the first reports were due July 1st, and I'm hearing talkback that J-LAR is not overly happy with the amount of reporting that they're getting. A lot of agencies are claiming that they're under that $100,000 threshold, and I've been told that we should look at being prepared for them to either lower or eliminate that threshold altogether, so that all agencies have to report. So in looking at that, with our staffing model, there is no way that we can track all of those J-LAR metrics manually. It's just insanely complicated, and there is a public records software module, and they have, in this last year, developed a reporting tracking process through their software that will spit out a report that I can get all of these, all of this information off of to complete the annual report to J-LAR. We don't currently have to report, I'm guessing a maximum of a year to two years before we'll have to. So I would like to have that process in place and being used, and learned how to use before we're subject to the requirement. The cost for that, the, oh, this just kind of shows the public records request that we've received, this is the total number from 2008, and we had a strange low in 2014, I don't know why, I'm wondering if maybe just some things didn't get logged. But 2019 is our previous high, we have already reached that this year, and that data is through September 15th. So we've actually surpassed it, because we've received multiple ones since then. So the cost for the software is $4,250 per year, and that provides the software and as many users as we need within the city, like there's PV records people and myself, my office. There's a one-time $1,000 fee, setup fee, and then the annual fee would just be the $4,250. Some of the benefits of this product is you have a website portal where they can actually, people can actually go in and make their public records requests. You can have intuitive notices in that, where if somebody's typing in a request for something that is frequent, or that you don't have the information, they need to be sent somewhere else, you can have notes that pop up and tell them those things. Or if you have a particular record that's being requested all the time, you can have that pop up and give them a link to that, so then you wouldn't actually even have the request, they would just get it automatically. So that's kind of my big, I need that for software for public records requests. Ordinances and resolutions, as you know, we did a whole bunch last year, we're doing a whole bunch more this year, and it looks like it will continue next year, especially since we're doing a lot of comprehensive plan updates, Mike wants to do the utility code, all of that. Contracts and agreements is someplace that I am having trouble keeping up with. I'm getting the main parts taken care of, but when it comes to the filing and the tracking and the monitoring for expenditure, or expiration dates, things of that nature, and transferring to archives or destroying when they've met retention, that just isn't happening. There's just no possible time for that. Community events, you all know those have grown from a little four or five-person farm market to a huge farm market, and the winter fest and fall festival, 4th of July, we want them to grow bigger next year. So I really liked the idea that the Economic Development Commission said about some designated revenue, whether it be from the business license or somewhere else, that it'd be nice to be able to have an actual budget for those, so that when I'm looking at marketing and things of that nature, preparing for these events, we aren't having to just rely on whether somebody, some business is going to donate us some money or not, but we'd actually be able to plan for something, so. And staffing. Every time you guys make a legislative action, or approve a contract, or anything of that nature, it creates work for my office. Especially when you do something like creating a new advisory board, or a new utility, an ambulance service, a stormwater utility, those things. Coverage for vacation, as Sarah explained when she was out, the only things that got done were the little bit that bias was able to do.
We need a roll over.
Okay, okay. So just when one of us is gone, nobody else has the ability to cover for us, so. So, any questions?
So that $4,200, that sounds like a reasonable amount, of course, I mean, obviously, that was, for what you're doing now, that even in the future, that would save you time now if you had that software in place, correct?
Yes.
From current, what I understood, from current activities?
It will save, actually, Mary Ann and police more time than it will me.
And we're guessing about what the requirements are going to be in the future, we really don't know, but yeah, no, that sounds, sounds extremely reasonable. Thank you.
Okay, with that, next one on our half-buckle review.
Thank you. So in January of this year, the building department was consolidated into community development, so Scott and Larry and Carolyn are my employees, so that entails building, planning, which is me, and the general day-to-day task Carolyn helps out with for public works and engineering, as well as building department and planning, and that's going very well. We're coming up on our sixth month with Carolyn, we're really happy and very grateful that you guys funded that position.
Time passes.
Yeah.
Yeah, it does. But she's been great. Coming up for the building department next year, we're looking at the code cycle updates for the building codes are, will all be new next year. The state will likely adopt the 2018 codes in 2019, and that will entail a lot of resources for new codebooks, and then also training, which is crucial. We have been a little bit behind in our certifications for our commercial and our residential reviews, and so this year, although it wasn't budgeted for, we moved some money around and got, in fact Larry's off doing a commercial review, a commercial certification right now in Seattle. Larry, or Scott went to the residential one earlier in the year, but they all, so they're going to swap next year and do those in addition to the code updates. It's very important that we have our inspectors certified, because it's a liability if they're not, if we're making calls out in field, we need to have certifications to back those up. So that's, that's an additional expense for my department. This thing is, do you hear that? Trying to stay away from it, but. I've been pushed, pushing off conferences. This year, I didn't attend any, so I'm hoping to attend the APA conference next year, the planning directors conference, as well as, there's a unique opportunity to attend the revitalization Washington conference, which is, this year it'll be a national conference, the National Main Street Conference in Seattle, and so that's always a unique opportunity, anytime you can attend a national conference in your own state, because you get a flood from the rest of the United States, the different communities, and it's a good experience to see what other communities are doing. We did send one of our historic preservation commissioners to the revitalization Washington conference this year, that was one conference that we did get to attend this year. I think that, so from the, from the planning side, next year we'll have some residual of the development rate stuff to deal with expenses there, but more importantly, and what I mentioned earlier, when Greg was here, is setting aside some money for that agricultural study with the other agencies. We really need to get ahead on that, and the other agencies, at least the county, I know they're planning on budgeting for that, so, so that's, that's important to keep in mind. And then, and then I guess I would get into the, the facility, couple of facilities for our, you know, city, city hall, fire department, police department, and other buildings around the city. So I've got a list of basically 14 items that are, and I ranked them in there. The biggest one is that we need to get our server in the basement in a secure position right now, it's actually sitting on the ground, so it's not a huge expense, but we need to get some alarms in there in case there's a flood. At least we have some notice and some alarms. City hall, when we, when we started this remodel project over here, it entailed getting into the control modules for the fire alarm system, and they got it up and running, and then the alarm kept going off and kept going off, and so it's actually not functioning right now. John, I should have told you to plug your ears, but, but what our system does right now is just notify...
You won't get violation notice until next week.
Okay, great, that'll give me some time. What, what the system does right now is just tells people in the building that there's a possibility that there's a fire, so that we can safely, safely leave the building. What it doesn't do in the middle of the night when it goes off, is it doesn't call the fire department. So this building would likely probably burn to the ground, or be heavily damaged, and we have a lot of documents in here to protect. So since the system's not really functioning to even get us out safely when we're here, we need a system that will actually call the fire department when there is a fire.
Do you guys maybe want to look out a window once in a while in this direction?
Yeah.
Actually, John, burning of the documents would probably...
No, no, we don't want to talk about that at the public meeting, but...
Wait, wait, I'm curious, is there something we should know?
The third thing on the list is, I know we'll go through the whole thing, probably just the first six or seven. Community and development remodels, so we have additional staffing coming on, Robert's got a new employee. We don't have any room over there unless we want to put them in a cell, which, you know, we just have to move some stuff out, and they have their own bathroom as well. That room over there, those three cells are, they are cells, they are encased with a concrete ceiling, so there's going to be additional expenses in that. We'll have to phase that project, we want to convert the garage into a conference room, that'll be next year, so on and so forth. That entails some work with the police department, get them out of that space, and I'm getting the role from Mike, so that's pretty much my budget right there.
Okay.
Pretty good.
Okay, any questions? With that, Robert?
Does anybody have any questions?
Great job, Robert.
Just jump right to it. Really, engineering role is not changing at all, but it's pretty much the same, maybe a few dollars difference, but not, not a thing significant. Mostly, I play a service role, my department of one as it is right now, works mostly to support public works, planning, administration, and all utilities, so we'll see that there, some of our accomplishments this year. New part of that is, and actually, I should say, in addition to support role, of course, we obviously do, I'm obviously involved with a development review for all the projects that come through, supplies that come through, we're working with the developers, making sure that's working out in the field, so that's also another big part of it. And then, of course, this next year, we'll have stormwater utility, and we're bringing out a couple employees, one will be working with Paul's group, one will be working with me, so we'll see how that goes. So we really have three prongs in engineering. So we really have three prongs in the engineering division, that's basically it, and I believe we'll be talking about the stormwater utility later on, so I won't explain too many of that. Are there any questions?
The addition of the engineer for the stormwater, is that some of the, I mean, I think you just alluded to that, though, they can assist you in other ways, other than that, is there any cross?
I sure hope so. That's one of the, that's the idea, is that this person would be flexible enough, sharp enough, that we could actually use them, not just in stormwater, that they would do that, they'd also be looking at engineering tech support, but also GIs. So we have a, a job description that really entails three of the positions under one person, so we'll use them very well.
Let's pressure off you a bit, maybe assist you. Yeah. That's nice.
I have noticed that we only tend to hire sharp people, so you should be okay.
Keep that triangle.
Yes, good plan.
Okay, next one.
I have a second order.
No, that's.
My budget really hasn't changed from last year, I was just looking at the total, and it's a thousand dollars more than last year.
Nope.
And that's, there's two things I want to talk to you about. One is, that would be a bigger discrepancy if I had the full amount of credit card charges that we are processing now in here. So during the last year, our developer customers have discovered our credit card service, and have started paying their permits with credit cards, and I did some statistics on it, and 1% of our credit card transactions accounts for 47% of the credit card dollars we process. So Mike and I are talking about bringing forward a resolution to you guys here very shortly, saying that if a transaction's over a certain dollar amount, or if it's not a utility payment, or some factor like that, that we will accept an ACH, like an electronic check payment, but not a credit card payment, because the fees are just too much. So I think that that will be a good solution for everyone, they can still pay electronically, instantly, you know, get their permits issued and all of that, and we don't have all the credit card fees to pay.
Yeah, and check the, what you can say on that, because I know that there's limits, if you accept credit cards, you have to accept credit cards, and you can't, there's some limits on, you can't charge them the fees, like, so I just double-check that.
Okay.
But it's a great idea, just make sure we do it right.
Okay, so that's, I eliminated about $10,000 of credit card fees from my budget that I would have to budget if we don't adopt something like that. So that's the first thing. The second thing is the deputy clerk finance position. I just wanted to share with you some numbers. What we're kind of thinking to balance out the cost of the position is to eliminate the farmer's market payroll, the payroll for the engineering interns that were getting tech over there, the payroll for, I had budgeted accounting intern money, which we ended up using for contract labor while I was down this year, and then we have the new business license revenue stream coming in, and then. What?
If they vote.
If, if you guys vote for that. Possibly coming in, we'll put it that way. And then the marketplace fairness is another fairly sizable chunk of money that we hadn't had before. All in all, if, if we take the dollars budgeted for all of those, it would actually pay for like two deputy positions, so there should be more than enough to cover that. I would take two if you want to give us two.
Noted.
But it, it definitely became apparent this year that, just with the workload increase, that it's, it's a really important position, and we're really hoping you guys will support. So other than that, status quo.
Okay. Okay, with that, the next one would be fire department, John.
So for 2019, probably one of the top items, looking at purchasing a new pickup truck for the department. Apparently, as we're talking with the police department, they may purchase our old pickup. Challenge we have is that the pickup isn't really heavy enough to hold a command trailer or a safety trailer, so we need to update that. Hopefully, augment the cost of that by selling it one way or another. We're going to start our ambulance service, and we want to operate it in black, so that's going to be a top priority. Hopefully, we're going to be remodeling our downstairs kitchen as well. Upstairs kitchen is scheduled to be remodeled this year, hoping that it's finished in 2021. We're hoping that by that time we can also begin replacing other such things in our station as the apartment, which will be at a 20-year mark at that point, it's showing its age. We're also hoping to start looking for another wildland engine replace one of our aging type six engines. What we have been able to increase in revenue from the city through participating in the state mobilization program and a DNR severity patrol, I think we would more than offset the, the cost of that. Continue to increase our community presence on some of the various programs we participate in, I think we have a really good relationship with citizens. Looking to research optional payment for our community members, so they'll have an opportunity to maybe pay a voluntary fee, so that anything above and beyond what their insurance will pay for an ambulance ride, would then be taken care of, or they wouldn't have an additional fee on top of that, for communities that are doing that. It's also another revenue stream. Looking for some other non-traditional funding sources, but we've looked at, one of those is our wildland program, which has been very successful. Want to use, utilize the technology a little better for data entry, so we can reduce some data errors and also time concerns. With the starting of the new ambulance service, there's a lot of data that we're going to need to track, and for billing as well as for rent retention of that. One other thing we're looking at, a possibility, Walla Fire District Four hires temporary full-time employees in the summertime to help man their station, but also be spun to state mobilization and/or patrol contracts with the DNR. They hire them for 12 weeks, and we would like to do something similar, maybe, with two to three employees, something that would definitely help us in our retention and approval of volunteers, something that will also keep them around during the summer when they're not hospital. I think those positions could be also funded out of the Wildland Fire Program. I think you've seen the proposal and budget, and also those items are to augment our ambulance service, and with our new training officers, some of the training programs that we're hoping to participate in, a number of us are needing to continue training for enforcement of codes and code updates and so forth, so we'll see most of those in the budget there. Questions?
Any question? I see in this 2020, there's a promote John Booth, what's that about?
Well, you know, that's something that's been talked about for a while.
What would it be?
Well, I think there's, there's a couple of different possibilities. Mike might be able to speak to that.
Well, it's just when you look at similar sized fire departments typically, fire marshal and owner takes more of like a leadership role, and is more of like a salary type position, does things like that, so it's moving to more of like a deputy fire chief role. That existed in Colfax, a lot of similar combination departments have that.
Pretty much what I'm already doing.
Great, yeah.
Yeah.
I have a question. So as we discussed at the last council meeting, there's, the cost structure or infrastructure is, for the ambulance is in place, more or less, and we talked about potentially the need as, as we monitor this going forward, adding expenses to that. But we will now be billing, if I understand this, for the first time, correct? Is that, those funds will be tracked, that'd be nice to get a, we can talk about this later, but also, but as far as tracking what that is six months from now, because that's a new revenue stream, are there restrictions on how, maybe we don't know the answer to this question, are there restrictions on how that money can be used? Do we know, in other words, does it have to be, I know some of the requirements for specific use perhaps with emergency services, or is this, what are your thoughts on that?
I mean, typically, it has to stay within the firing ambulance, that's how it was in Colfax with the bill on, so.
But, yeah, I kind of, yeah, I.
Certainly, if we establish utility, that confines the use of those funds to that utility. Other than that, you know, it's generally, it's just policy that says the income that's generated stays within, stays within.
But it may not be restricted for capital or for salaries, it could be, to our, the best of our knowledge, it could be used within that area, but, okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Any final one? Okay, with that, Sean.
All right. Not a lot of changes in my budget this year, I'm just hoping that the training budget would stay the same. There was a small increase to the wellness budget in 2018, so I'm hoping that we can also maintain that. And then really the only increase is I'm doing five cabinets in my office in the locks, because I have lots of secret information. One of the things that I have is broken, and I did also put in there a personal new office picture, a stand-up desk specifically. Other than that, everything's pretty much the same. Any questions? I could go on, I'm not, I'm not really.
Looks good.
Thanks.
Okay, next, police department.
Okay, well, the mayor said I could ask for anything, so I'm doing that. So as you know, well, I'm going to lay a case in front of the honorable Harvey Crowder here for next year, maybe, I don't know. So I'm asking pretty much to ask.
You know you can ask for anything. Kind of ask in one hand and the other, and see which one gets full first.
So we all know, well, actually, maybe you don't know, but I did a survey of our law enforcement officers, both present and past, and ironically, I thought the number one reason people were leaving is leadership and pay, because Walla PD right now makes $1,200 more a month than our officers.
A month?
A month. So in fact, top end, they make $22,000 more than our top end officer per year. But ironically, the number one reason why officers are leaving the College Police Department is because they don't want to work by themselves. We work independently. Leadership was two, under the old guard, that's changing, and then pay was number three. So it was very interesting, the results of the survey. Having said that, in order to have two officers on patrol all the time, seven days a week, we need four more officers. So my request to you is to, you know, for four more officers, and I know that we're probably not going to get that this year, but I'm hoping that we make a, lay a foundation for that here in the near future. In addition to that, I'm also asking for an assistant, I have no administrative help, it's just me. So it would be very nice to have a lieutenant captain position, which is consistent with most agencies our size, and especially as we're going to grow throughout the, as the organization is growing with the city, we need that. Kind of like what the fire department wants to do with the assistant, she's kind of the same role. Other than that, I've asked for some additional money for training, we have new officers, we just, we have more people we have to train, and of course, equipment. If you've looked through my notes, I've looked at leasing cars, you know, as opposed to buying cars, the original, the original costs that came in, and the hard part about doing this in August is things change throughout the year, and it's very difficult, you're guessing a lot, which is very difficult for me, but the original bid off the cuff was $400 a month, it's not. The cheapest lease option I found is just under $1,000 a month for a patrol car.
With the mileage, huh?
Yeah, so it's, so it's about $12,000 a year, but the, and I'm still doing the studies on this, but the advantage to leasing a patrol car, it comes fully equipped, and it's always under warranty. So, I mean, this year we've just been getting beat up with maintenance costs, and it's been very difficult. So, and our patrol cars are five years old, and even with the new state cars, as long, as, as great as they are, in good condition they are, even though we're missing three still, they're, they're 110,000 miles apiece, so, you know, we, the, the use of those is limited. So we really have to, right now we're funded for one new car next year, and we really have to look at other options of getting cars, because we're not going to be able to keep up with it, the way it's, the way we're scheduled to do it right now. So that is something that we have to really look forward to deciding in the near future. So, equipment, some of the equipment options, I mean, it's listed out there, we need some just basic safety things, some tourniquet, additional tourniquet cases, we want some quick clot, and of course, Joey Lingelos got accepted to the regional SWAT team, which is a really great thing for the city and for the PD, and that's going to be an expense. And minimum, minimum fees for him, you know, on the team is $4,000 in equipment, and then SWAT basic will be around $1,500. And there's a few things here that I didn't even put in my budget that have come up, detective basic, been trying to get information on that with our new detective, that's going to be a couple thousand dollars to send them, to get them up to speed in their training, so we get, we have some, you know, with a young department, a growing department, we have some expenses, and so, yeah, there you go.
Any sort of uniforms?
Yeah, uniforms, of course, we're asking for, we still don't have a Class A uniform for officers, if they go to a funeral, they wear their patrol uniform, so it'd be nice to, and we can wear the, the long-sleeved shirts that we have, although we've moved to the jumpsuits, we all still do have the long-sleeved uniform, but I'm looking for some nice Class A pants, some nice dress shoes, and if we still have money left over, some hats, so, yeah.
Quickly, in the, in the last year, the city council has approved additional, some additional fees that you can charge for responding to emergencies, and how has that worked out?
Well, I mean.
We did a DUI cost recovery, we, we passed that ordinance, if that's one of the things you're talking about.
That's what I meant to say, yeah.
So Ree, our new prosecutor, is starting to file those, prior to Ree, those had not been filed.
Okay, that's.
So we're, I, it was the first things I talked to her and got her up to speed on, and we're now in the process of doing that, that will help. But those, those are nominal fees, those are small, you know.
Some of them for response were, you get reimbursed for the time, correct, that your officers are at a scene.
That's what it is, yeah.
And were there some other, I think, my memory fails me, seems like there were some other fixed fees for, oh, shoot, oh, perhaps that was the taking of evidence, or taking of property and whatnot, confiscating that, and.
We're in the process, in fact, you're talking about propertyroom.com, and we are in the process of going through all the property, they're making, they're picking up their first shipment next month, and, and we did just give $2,500 in property that was unclaimed money back to the city here within the last few weeks, or maybe it was last month, and then, so, but it's, those are small fees, but we are in the process of getting rid of years and years of property, and it's going to be a good thing. I don't know how much money it's going to bring in, it goes to auction, and we do get a percentage of that as well, so that would probably help offset some equipment.
And it's okay to use that to, so those additional reimbursement for, for time at a scene and some of these other activities, are you, I know it's not a lot of, you know, I understand, are you able to use that?
The RCW for the DUI reimbursement has to be used for traffic safety time, so you can use it for overtime, or we can use it for tools or instruments to be used for traffic safety law enforcement, so.
Not uniforms or not?
Not uniforms. We could, we might be able to purchase like a radar, those kind of things.
Okay, all right.
Good questions.
Yeah.
Good memory.
Thanks.
Michael has a question.
Michael?
You said you were kind of looking at potentially leasing patrol cars, you were kind of also saying it's hard to estimate kind of how the cost will compare, what's your feeling of like any sort of cost savings or maintenance savings, and like, just do we have any numbers, or is it still kind of vague?
Yeah, the, it's about $1,000 per car, and we're also.
Per month?
A month, yes, sir. $1,000 per car per month, and we're also looking at maybe switching from the Ford to a Dodge or Chevy, because they have local vendors, so we can have the service done locally, that's one of the logistic problems we've been having, is it's the nearest Ford dealership's an hour away. So, and if we have a car under warranty all the time, everything would be done through the service provider, so that would be a cost savings, and some of that's soft costs, because you're talking about labor and, and time, but that'd be significant savings. I think cost-wise, it's, just the preliminary numbers is pretty close to a wash, but because it's always under warranty, over time, you actually save money. At the end of that, you can purchase the vehicle for a nominal fee, at the end of the lease, if you decide you want to keep that vehicle, you can, the soft numbers. end of the lease, if you decide you want to keep that vehicle, you can, the soft numbers, you're around $6,000, $7,000 to purchase that vehicle at the end of the lease, and it's a four-year lease. So, um, it's looking pretty good. Pasco PD does it, uh, Richland just went to a leasing, Pasco PD is one of the first agencies in the state to do it, they've been leasing for over 20 years. The nice thing about it is you can, you can budget for it, you know your line item, you know the number, you don't have to guess, it's always that number there for you to budget, so what, which is a great thing.
No one expects it, like, if the transmission goes out, just boom.
It's taken care of, it's taken care of, yeah. So, there's, there's, there is definitely, in, in talking to some of my peers, they say that, uh, just the amount of time it saves them, um, and then you're not messing, you don't have to sell your cars, you don't have to deal with all that, you don't have to be pulling equipment out. Now, we do have equipment that we've purchased that we will, it brings the leasing price down when you have equipment, you put into it yourself, like, we've got recently, we've got some new laptops and some stands, we'll keep those, we'll install those to save money, um, up until the time where you have to replace that, then we'll include that in our leasing prices, so. Um, you pretty much tell them what you want, and they put it in the car, and then they figure out your leasing price. But it's roughly for the new Dodge Durangle Pursuit car that's coming out, it's gonna be roughly $1,000 a month, and, um, the, uh, the Charger is also available, an all-wheel drive, and it's about the same price. So, it's, uh, yeah, so, still early to give you full price. Once, once I have a report put together, I'll definitely let you see it.
Would you be starting out by, uh, just like, just starting to lease one vehicle, kind of see how it goes, or are we like, just looking at like, sell and hold them and then replacing them all leases?
That's real, I, I, it's hard to make that decision until I see what the numbers really look like, um, but once the numbers come in, we can, we can make that determination, uh, and whatever you feel comfortable with, and how you want to move forward. So, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, well, next after police departments, Public Works, sub Paul?
Hey, public rental. Uh, I'll dill over Detroit, I have to say, uh, in regards to leasing. Uh, I haven't really talked to them much, but, but, uh, we've got vehicles that are getting older, the only advantage that we have now is because we're giving each officer the mileage on each vehicle, we're going less, but other than that, we're still up in the, in the 50, 60,000, and the one we get from the state patrol, it's already over 100. So, we're at that, we're at that life, in terms of what we would normally replace, so, uh, but they are road miles, they're, they're not in-town driving, so that's an advantage. The only thing I don't know is, is on the lease part, evident, like I said, we have discussed, whether, whether they're gonna still want the shop to do the oil change, that, that type of stuff, or is that covered under that warranty, where they just take it to the dealer, we don't know yet, so, uh, other than that, I think that's a good deal. Uh, we have 83 vehicles, would we, when we get, this is the other advantage to, to leasing, especially if, if, if all maintenance goes away. A majority, uh, I mean, a, a good portion of fleet maintenance fine is on these vehicles, online, they're in the shop. Uh, and so, you get rid of that maintenance issue, then the, the need doesn't go away, but it definitely lessens for the need for employees. You've got 83 vehicles plus, if we get the three more, and standard operating on a fleet is you have one mechanic per 40 vehicles, and, and we have a half mechanic for 83, because the, because the other time, he's supposed to be doing administrative stuff. Uh, so, uh, that, that would help in, in the shop. Uh, again, uh, plan for a new car for administration, a, a plan for a new car for travel, the new car for travel would be to go out of town and, and distances, and then we'll keep one or two of the old, the old travel cars, just for local use around here. Uh, John already talked about the fire, uh, fire chiefs vehicles and so forth, so. Uh, the other thing, uh, we could probably get by for a year with, without, look if we can keep the old travel cars, uh, for the engineering tech, I mean, for the engineering planning, they need a vehicle that be able to be used, they, so, we need that. And ultimately, the stormwater employee needs a vehicle, uh, he's not gonna be driving the sweeper all the time, he's not gonna be driving the vector all the time, uh, so, you know, you just add vehi, you add departments, you add employees, you gotta think of the vehicles, it's just, you gotta have one. Uh, so that's all I have for the equipment rental for right now. I was gonna go for parks, Matt, I don't think you've been looking at those, so, parks is simple. Uh, uh, one employee there, the issue is, the big issue is, are we gonna get funding for the improvements of Lyce Park?
Yep.
That's the big issue. Then, and then, and if we do, and we get the splash pad, and then there's additional training and, and so forth, to operate basically a swimming pool caliber, uh, with, with chlorination and all that you have to do. So, unless, this one won't have to require chlorine, but I can't imagine.
If you reuse the water, then you have to have an employee that can operate.
Oh, this is not gonna be reused today?
Nope, nope.
Okay, so we're good there. Streets. Uh, I think it's important to understand that, that funding for streets is only for arterials, basically. Now, Mike's been able to find some in regards to complete streets, and under that program, that will help under local roads, but that's limited funding, and, and you, you've got a big capital expense on the roadways that are local roads. Uh, so, this year, uh, I hope to seal a, a majority of the bike path, uh, on Whitman, it's due, it needs it bad, uh, and then chip sealing would be Date Street, scenic view from Central Village, Second Street from Ash to Date, and Southwest 6, Evans up the hill to the top of our right way. Okay, water. Uh, main thing we want to do is go to a full automated meter reading system, uh, with census, uh, we've got the, we've had, uh, we're meeting with them, their, their contractor's line, or they would hire the contractor, they would come in and change every meter in the city, uh, and, and get it all to a radio reader, so the office can just basically like push a button and read meters. Uh, we won't go out and manually or, or walk around. Uh, that will free up some time, uh, won't free up any time in the upcoming year, but in subsequent years will free up an employee time, uh, because he won't be in the three days a month, four days a month, uh, reading meters. Uh, with the exception that District 14 and Green Tank meters, because they are on our sewer, we still will need to meet them, and there's no way around that, so. Unless they want participation and, and in this program, so. I'm gonna let you know, everybody's talking about employees, I'm gonna let you know, current Public Works employees are eight, with a population of over 9,500. I had, thirty, forty years ago, I had 800, I mean, eight employees with 6,500 people. We are not staffed adequately to do the job, the way, and, and some things that you'll see evident in that, we used to pave streets, we can't do that anymore. We can't go over and we can't plan for a project where we say we want to change the services out and replace the old galvanize like on Highland Park where we lost a good amount of water and a good part of the street, uh, because we don't have, we, we can't maintain a crew for any length of time without being pulled off to do something else. And, and the problem you're gonna run into with this is if we don't start getting on top of this stuff, we're gonna lose it all, and then you're gonna spend big bucks. Uh, and so, uh, you know, I've been planning to do services over at Sunset Bell on Alden and Belroy to finish up that project for the last 10 years, and I haven't been able to touch them. Uh, so, uh, it is, you know, it's not, everybody has, has needs, but I just want you to know that our apartment is the same size as it was 40 years ago, and so. The other thing we need to, we need to really look at is replacing the steel water mains in the city. Fortunately, we don't have a lot, but we have Southeast merge from Second merge, Southwest Fifth from Bay, Post Office, Sky, uh, One Alley, Long Alley, and Six from College to Date, so that's all the steel. If we could get rid of all that steel, I'm not worried about this, because it's concrete veins, they're, they're new veins, but, but it's steel that we need to take care of. Waste water.
Paul, on, on your steel, is that, is that gonna be a contractor, or are you gonna, you?
We, we don't have the time. It would be, it needs to be a contractor, and, and, and I, I understand that, it's more, what I'm saying is that on the employee being able to do the work is on these services that need to be replaced all over town, that are still steel.
So, would that mean a complete rebuild of the street?
Well, that's the other issue when you get into that, is, is how much money do you want to bear onto the utility to replace the street? Uh, but yes, you, you, you put in a water line, uh, hopefully, if it's got bad sewer, you want to replace the sewer, and then when you do the laterals and, and all that stuff, you've, you've basically torn up the street, and it needs to be done. Uh, so, but it's the issue of how much do you want to bear that onto the utility to replace that street, and, and this is the question, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Fortunately, Jacobs slash CH2M are doing a wonderful job with treatment plant, uh, you can't complain with what they're doing, they're, they're, they're keeping us informed. Uh, I think, I think we told you, they, they gave us a $135,000 reimbursement, uh, from previous year, uh, operation. I, I don't know what we'll get in the upcoming year, but, uh, they, they communicate, and they're, they're efficient in what they do. Uh, the other thing, we don't have this, again, and I don't, I hate to belabor the point, uh, we don't have the staff to, to go around, because the TV inspection of the sewer mains was our responsibility. Uh, we should be doing a third of the town a year. We, we maybe do s, a thousand feet, and that's only on new developments to see if it's looking to, so, so we can't, we can't do that. And I understand as a stormwater person, uh, a lot of the stormwater work, unless they're sweeping, but if they go out to do, do, do work, they clean storm break, that's a, that's not a one-person job, that, that's a two, at, at a minimum. We need to find a way to fund the collection system maintenance, as well as water system maintenance. All our emphasis, because the funding agencies are that way, are focused on your, your treatment plant and your big water issues like the wells and that type of stuff, but, but the water mains and the sewer mains, there, there's, there's limited funding availability for that, and that's, that's critical, that's really critical, especially in the sewer. Uh, a lot of our sewer, and, and I don't want to say that, we have several sewer mains that are in the backyards, that, that, you don't, you can't even access manholes with equipment to clean, so it's difficult to manage that. We need to, uh, and I, I do have a contract out now, and there's good TV and possibly line, hopefully, we can do more lining, because that's, that'll save you a lot of money. Uh, and we're gonna do the, the line between College and in between Rose and C Street, and, and they're gonna be doing that and that, and then we've got deep mains that are 18 feet deep, uh, that, uh, in an alley with a 20-foot wide alley, try to replace that by digging, hopefully, we can replace it, and that's what we're gonna TV and inspect it, to see if we can line and, and, and save us a lot of money. And then, just so you, you know, infiltration's a big issue in, in wastewater, uh, a third of our flow in the treatment plant in the winter is infiltration, it's water coming into the mains because the mains are bad, uh, or there, you know, for some reason, there's a hole, or, or there's some avenue for water to get in. Uh, so, if you could reduce inflow, uh, by a third, your treatment costs go way down, so, uh, that, that's one thing, but video inspection helps in the winter, and, and so, just having the manpower to do that stuff to keep up, uh, could help in the long run. Any questions?
I hear you just need people and money?
Oh, that's every department.
Yeah, that's.
It's only money.
Yeah, and people.
Well, and stuff.
Two things.
Can't forget the stuff.
Yeah.
But I will say, my guys do a lot of work for.
Yeah.
The quantity of people that we have, they're, they're good people, you, you can't find a better crew, and they want, and they'll stay here.
That's awesome. They have a good leader.
Maybe we could do some like wastewater bake sales or something. How little sewer pipes coming out of the cupcakes?
Fertilizer sands. You know, with efficiencies, you're talking about the meter reading, I think the first thought is always, well, there's a savings out of the budget, you know, you don't, you can let somebody go, but, uh, that, many times, that's the first, you know, but, but on the other hand, it's efficiencies perhaps that we can build in this system where somebody may not be the right person to do whatever we've got to do somewhere else, but it's not a case of reduction, reducing those costs as much as it is allocating the resources to the areas that need them, and, um, even cross-training staff as far as, you know, you talked about an assistant, and I know that, you know, but as we add staff, is there, I know you guys don't have silos, but is there some way to cross-train and help, and then there's, not just the, the streets, but, but anyway, yeah, um, thank you.
The problem with cross-training, you can't cross-train in, in, in between departments, you know, a police officer, you can't expect that. The only cross-training really that, that can be done is, is within like Public Works.
Right.
And we're doing that all day.
Right, no, no, yeah, obviously, as we look to add some of these, you know, engineering in all the departments as far as efficiency use of staff.
It happens in like community development, for instance, already, because Caroline helps John, Robert, Paul, and so, there's quite the cross-training of what.
No, in other areas, yeah, yeah, not, not looking to reduce, but reallocate perhaps and add, yeah.
Okay.
Good.
Uh, the last one is the stormwater there.
I put together a little, uh, area here, maybe that's a little, uh, in fact, we just kind of rehearsed what we'll be doing this coming year as a startup utility. Um, the, the important thing to, to look at is the $371,000 on each of the 13. Um, we've actually been shuffling the numbers a little bit in terms of how we allocate the personnel in particular, um, but in addition to our operating costs, which are primarily personnel costs, we also have the operating plan minimum balance, we're trying to build up, so we have reserve, and then we have the capital costs, and we're actually funding about 25% of those. Um, we are looking at purchasing a sweeper for 2019, and that's almost a quarter of a million dollars, so, only $60,000 is being budgeted for that, the rest of it will be on our shoulders, trying to get grants for that, so we're gonna cover it that way. So, we're still looking at managing everything within that $371,000 that we talked about. Uh, we are playing around a little bit with the personnel allocations between benefits and allocations between like engineering and stormwater and all that all works, but it looks like it's gonna be pretty close to that, uh, it looks like we'll retain a $23,000 contingency or something in that, in that range, so, it's looking like it's gonna work, and we're looking forward to making that happen. Um, it's gonna be a lot of work. Big challenge right now is to push ecology to finish off an expanded scope under the current plan to allow us to bring parameters or consulting in, actually classify all of our commercial properties before we hit the ground running in January and start charging rates, because you have to know how much in previous area each one of those folks have to, to actually charge them. So, that's gonna be our big challenge, and we've been on the horn trying to get them to respond, in fact, we're hoping to get a response this week, or else we're probably gonna get a little bit more aggressive in terms of calling, um, regulatory heads, so that's kind of where we're at. Are there any questions? You've heard a lot about the sweeper, so.
We'll be two sweepers?
Initially, just.
We'll have a total of two, an old one and a new. That little sweeper is how.
Oh, the, well, the hoppers got rust holes in it.
But that was.
I mean, that's how bad it is.
Yeah.
Uh, so, uh, I, I would anticipate we'd be able to replace the sweeper, and that, that one will go away.
And, and I'll just add something with both the sweeper and the vector, uh, which as we get into 2019, we're really gonna try for, so, we're at the tail end of being able to qualify. We're at the tail end of being able to qualify for USDA rural development grants and loans for equipment such as like the vector and sweeper. The criteria for the USDA money is actually ten thousand population, and we're at nine thousand five hundred and sixty, so we're gonna try to get all the stuff before we hit ten thousand, because then, uh, well, we won't be able to put in for that grant money any longer, so.
Yep, the, the vector's twenty years old, I can't find the sweeper, but I assume the sweeper's as old or older.
I think that's, yeah. Maybe that a young lad, when that was bought.
Oh, well, no, the sweeper, the sweeper is only eighteen years old.
But it's been rebuilt twice.
Well, I know, it's just-
It's practically new.
Yeah. They're well, both of, well, there's a lot of equipment that's well beyond its serviceable life.
Maybe I should add too, just emphasize what Paul was saying, um, there, there is, uh, there is gonna be a person living under his group, who will be able to work something doing stormwater work, and they are really, really lean over there, and they just do not have a lot of resources to do awful lot of work, and I see it every day because I'm kinda there, covering shoulders with Paul and the guys that are coming in, but I just want to reassert that they have a part of the job that I know they have. And, I guess I would say they need some assistance, and hopefully this will go a little bit.
You know, the thing that's frustrating, I'm, I'm sorry, maybe I shouldn't say this, the thing, the thing that's frustrating is that you cannot find, pardon me, you cannot find people that wanna work, part-time people that wanna work. That's the frustrating thing. I, I've got one employee that's been here now, I think, forty years, has been with him around forty years, and I, I, I hired him as a part-time pimp, and I went and had another one, and that lasted a week. Then I hired another one, that lasted three days, and then I hired another one and didn't make it a day. It, it's just hard, I did, you know, it's really hard to find people that want to work, physically work, they're more interested in phones and all this other job, so.
It's a tough, it's a tough job market, uh, for, for, you know, qualified people.
Very.
To your point.
Very, as you saw in the economic slide, when you have that, 'cause you're typically a full employment when you're below the five percent. When I was at the Port Walwa Economic Development Commission meeting, that number I had up there at four point two actually is down to four point one now, which means that you really don't have a workforce at that point, which makes it really, really interesting to find people. Yeah. And then, uh, if there is any questions on department head stuff, I'm not gonna belabor everything, we just went over, but the remaining spreadsheets really encapsulate a summary of the big capital facility, equipment replacement and IT items. I, I will leave you with a couple of figures that, I don't know, I just find very fascinating. If you're to look at the full, uh, outlay of the streets that really need replacement bad, if you were to put that out over the next six years, that comes out to north of twenty-three million dollars. And then the waste-
Per year?
And, and then the wastewater system, and this is mainly driven by the permitting regarding, uh, upgrades out of the treatment plant, and then also that, uh, trunk line that I mentioned, so we can, uh, serve South College Place, increase capacity in the Walmart area. Wastewater, the six-year on that's north of thirty-six million, and the water, uh, utility, although in, in the spreadsheet for this, it's including appropriations we got for the two wells and so forth, but that's a little north of thirteen million, so this is, uh, very high-ticket items, and, uh, looking at the prices, I believe it is accurate, uh, just because of the, as I said, the contractors, they're so busy in the private sector, they just are not hungry for the work, and they view the pain, uh, deal with all the government contracts, so it's leading to, uh, cost escalation, especially when you're out in a semi-rural area like we are, where there isn't just the depth of, uh, companies to do that sort of the stuff. But there is a draft spreadsheet for equipment replacement plan, and a summary sheet for a six-year IT strategy, so that there is, it's all encapsulating this capital facility, ER and IT plans to look at at your leisure.
Sorry, you just brought up, so that, uh, you, you know, you're talking about the trunk line, the other thing we gotta remember is we've gotta get under the, the SR one-twenty-five-
Yeah.
Because they're, they're redoing it in twenty-twenty now, and now's the time to do it. If you're gonna cross that with our sewer, which, which is deep, you're looking at, if we open cut it, roughly, uh, the last quote I got was about two-hundred-and-sixty thousand, boring would be about three, about another hundred. So, uh, you know, though, that's something we gotta be looking at.
Yeah, but we're working feverishly on the, uh, Southwest trunk line, because not only is it for McCurn and Christensen, but when the UGA swap finally goes through the county, and we have the Peppers Bridge area, and even Walmart and that whole area, it helps with capacity over there. It's really key, 'cause that's our key, uh, commercial corridor down there.
Capital but, capital, capital expenditures, IT, equipment, north of ninety million dollars over the next six years. No, we're not gonna, no, we're not gonna spend ninety million, we don't have ninety million dollars over the next six years.
We're pretty poor.
But that, that gives you an idea of, of, and as, as the, as we move forward, you know, one of, one of our jobs will be, and we'll work through the finance committee with this, is taking a look at prioritizing all, all of the needs, you know, there, we, we, we have, over a period of time-